We've got one, two, three more after this one. Uh huh. Folks, if you could have your attention, I'd like to get back, come back to order here after lunch. Hope everybody had a good lunch here and ready to go for another hour or two. So with that, when we stopped, I think we were down, we were still Commissioner questioning time, and I had Ms. Smith next, and then Mr. Finney.
Oh, knew she. Um, I guess I need...
Your microphone, yeah, it is, okay.
I have a question. You seem to have covered all your bases. You did the ADA thing and everything.
Hold your microphone a little bit closer to you, if you would.
But has anybody from your group talked to the train CSX people?
Not directly for this site. Under what issue?
Well, the back of this Phase One, it adjoins the railroad. It's not close, but hazardous materials go up and down the railroad all the time. If there's a catastrophic event, you've got all those people in there that are going to try to get to Commerce Parkway on two lanes. And I was concerned about EMS, the fire department, railroad, and I thought perhaps the rail mode might be interested. I know they have a 30-foot easement, but when the trains, when the cars fall off the track, they just don't go over on the side. They jackknife and rupture and everything else.
Ms. Smith, with all due respect, I mean, I think that's the issue we have in downtown LaGrange every single day.
Exactly right.
You know, as I, I went to lunch, I got trapped by a train in my car. I parked my car and I sat in the car and ate my lunch because I couldn't get out. I got out, I went across the street, I went into my office, I went upstairs for 30 seconds, I came back down to come back to your meeting, and I'm trapped by the train again.
I understand that.
If the train door rails in the middle of town, you know, God help me, I'm probably, I'm a dead man.
But...
I don't think it's any different for any of these sites.
But you have an access out. You can go toward the interstate. The people on the other side can go to the north. If they're in this enclosed area, they've got no place to go.
Well, with all due respect, ma'am, I think they do have a way to go. They've got Commerce Parkway, and they can go either direction on Commerce, and they can head towards the bridge and go across the bridge.
Well, I choose to disagree with you. I still think it's an issue. I also wanted to know about, through the packet, it talked about the roads into this property were going to be either public or private. Now, today, it tells that the road is going to be public back to your ticket booth or the entrance to your property. So when is, is the public road going to be built before? Because you don't own that property. How's the public road going to be built before your facility opens?
Well, we are working with the seller. The seller is, the property owner, is selling us the 30.7 acres. He's also, I'm not sure what the term is for it, dedicating the acreage that the road is, that the public road, the public road goes from Commerce to the end of the cul-de-sac. So that, the seller is dedicating that land. We are constructing that road to county standards and turning it over.
And it can certainly be a condition of approval that that road has to be constructed before they can start operating.
Right. That's our only access. We can't get to it without...
Mr. Urban has something to add to that.
Well, you've seen this before with the Oldham Oaks apartments. There was a public road built across somebody else's property to get to a private development. It's exactly the same.
Same thing?
Yes.
Okay. So that will be, and that will be constructed and dedicated as a public road before your facility opens?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much.
At our expense. As what? Okay, so that's one of these conditions of the sale, is in exchange for getting this property and the owner of the property dedicating the right-of-way to access the property, my client has to construct the road. They're responsible for the, and it's got to be up to county road standards. So he's got to pay for the road in order to get to it. So it's not Mr. Carpenter's, you're not relying on Mr. Carpenter to build the road. The road has to be built by Stephen in order, as a part of the conditions of the sale.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Finney.
Mr. Sauerbach, I have a couple of concerns, and some of them, they've been partially addressed through previous questioning. On this road that goes from your ticketing area to the parking area, especially on Phase One or Phase Two, you're channeling from a four-lane access into a one-lane road. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, so it's going from one to four to one.
Are we not just continuing a backup that will, because of that, then back up all the way on to Commerce Parkway? Because I appreciate you're adding the four lanes in there. That has the appearance of alleviating a problem, but then when you, when you take that down to just one lane after that, suddenly you've negated all the advantage of having the four lanes going in there. It's kind of like what happens down at the fairgrounds. You know, they got eight or 10 access booths, but it still backs all the way out to Waterston Expressway sometime because there's not enough room for the traffic to then proceed on after they go through the ticketing. And then again, we go back to the same questions brought up of exiting one lane, all those cars, to me, that's a nightmare just waiting to happen.
Well, as far as the, the only reason, I mean, the reason that we're expanding to four lanes is for the ticket purchase, to getting people in. Because if, having that we can do four cars at the same time to do their purchase and then scale them in, there shouldn't be, after the ticket booth, there should be minimal delay because, one, it's a, I don't have the measurement, but it's probably close to 800 feet from the ticket booth all the way around to the other side of the theater entrance and the parking. Once they get to that parking spot, now they have nine lanes to choose from. So it's, it's not that everyone is funneling in and going to the same spot. They'll have plenty of time to make it around the other side, and then we're dispersing 400 cars amongst nine different rows of parking. So I don't believe that there will be a lot of delay. Once they've gotten past the ticket booth, there should be no delay making it around the bend to the parking area, even once it's...
There's no reason for them to stop once they go through the ticket booth.
Correct.
They're going to be just driving to get to access the gravel parking area.
The parking area, yeah. And that's, and that's one of the benefits, and that's why we're offering, the playground is only used before the show starts. Our goal is to get as many people there as early, I mean, that full hour beforehand so that we can kind of ease this traffic area instead of like, I don't know, something that happens all at one time, like, and there's no reason, like, people have football games, they tailgate, they get there early, so there's other things to do. If we can spread that traffic out on the way coming in, and then on the way coming out, it's a double feature showing. So there'll be the first movie will start at dusk and intermission, and then a second movie if people wish to stay. A lot of younger people may not, families with kids, so we may not have the full 450 all dumping out at the same time. That could be phased, have some of them leave after the first show, and then two hours later having another bunch leave. But regardless of whether we channel them back down to one lane at our property, they have to channel back down to one lane by the end when they get to Commerce anyway. So by our benefit, we're forcing any delay on exiting will happen within our business and on our property. So that way, we're not, if we had multiple exits on Commerce, now we're causing traffic on Commerce. If there's a delay of people leaving, it would be all on our site, and they are single file heading out by the time they get to public road.
Answer your questions, Mr. Finney.
Yeah, I think so. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All right. Commissioners, we've, our time has expired. Do we need to add some additional time? Do we have some additional questions? Okay. 10 minutes, you think, would be enough? All right. Let's do a motion this time, if we could. Okay. Dr. Urban, you motion to add 10 minutes?
Yes.
Okay. And then Mr. Williams, second?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Okay, we'll add 10 minutes to our questioning time. All right. That's all I had on the list here. I saw Ms. Blaney. Let me go, let her go first.
I have a question about the traffic flow, again. So between the rows of parking spaces, that's wide enough for one car? Because you're planning on everyone going one direction?
It's wide enough for two cars. We plan on one-way traffic. It's 40 feet from bumper, from front bumper to front bumper. So our calculation was you have up to 20 feet for the car itself, which most cars should be less than that, 18's about the most, have an additional four feet for people if they want to sit in front of or behind their car, and then that leaves 16 feet for the driving lane, so cars could pass, but we are strongly encouraging everybody to make a one-way flow.
I just know human nature, and on the busier nights, especially on Phase One, all the arrows are pointed toward the front. They're going to go that front row, and they're going to drive down, it's going to be full. Then they're going to want to turn around and go the wrong way up the hill. So the side lanes are also room for two cars?
Yeah. It's, the scale's challenging, but the hash marks are 12 feet apart, and then from the rows are 40 feet from the front of one to the front of the next.
Okay, okay.
They're spacious spots.
And how many nights a week do you plan to have showings during your on-season?
It may, it'll probably, most likely will vary. It's obviously going to be market-driven. I don't expect that we'll have enough business on weekdays when school's in session to justify being open, but I'm not going to tie my hand if the people want to come.
Okay. And then I'm not sure if these would necessarily be questions for you. On the technical review committee, and I apologize if this has always been, already been covered, but Scott Harris said that it didn't appear that one detention basin would be enough. Was that ever resolved?
I know they've had significant discussions with our engineer regarding that, because we had looked at different, I know we had tried several designs of whether we could do a regional basin for this entire side, because we're the top of the hill, and if we're detaining water, then the people below us are going to be detaining water and everyone to whether we could, and that's why I know we originally were hoping we could do a regional basin for the entire thing. It was becoming complicated, so that's why we opted. We have designed and are prepared to do a solo detention basin just for us that takes care of all of the drainage from the entire site.
Mr. Urban, you got something to add?
Well, and I can verify that they've been working with Scott Harris to resolve the, and the plan has actually changed somewhat, so they, you know, they've been working on the stormwater management plan, and that will obviously come in the construction plan phase.
And, and this was probably addressed, because now that I do know it's wide enough for two cars, there was also concern about the roadway surface for fire trucks and adequate width for fire trucks to get around.
We've verified that. We've worked with Keith Smith with LaGrange Fire Department regarding the drive lanes, access into the property, and fire hydrant placement.
And this, this is my last one. I keep looking at the playgrounds, especially in Phase One, and you said it was only going to be utilized before the movie started?
That's the intention.
So only when the sun is up, so there'll be no lighting around the playground?
Correct. I mean, there, when the movie is showing, I mean, it's just like you're sitting and you turn the TV on in your living room in a dark room, it casts light into the area. So it, it's like having an 80-foot by 40-foot nightlight. It's going to illuminate a lot of the parking lot for, it's not walking around in pitch black.
Well, the reason I was kind of asking about when it would be utilized is the one on Phase One concerns me because it's in such close proximity to where drivers are driving around, coming in or leaving, and the kids have to cross, I mean, they'd have to walk through the parking lot anyway, but I would think that front road might be utilized more. It was just a little bit of a concern to me. If it wasn't being utilized once it was dark, makes me feel better.
Right. No, no, we don't want kids playing around right in front of the movie. So no, it would be, the intention would be, once the movie starts, that it would be restricted not to be used.
Okay.
Because it, once the movie starts, a lot of people will sit in that green area right in front.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. I had, let's see here, Mr. Horton, and then Mr. Douglas, and then Dr. Urban.
Yeah, one, just one quick question. There've been a lot of questions about the design. When you designed this regarding the parking and the directional flow and all these things, did you, did you do that with a background or research by going to other places, or is there a standard for drive-ins? Or is there an association or something that, that you relied on, or is this a concept that, that you all specifically designed?
We did a tremendous amount of in-person research. That's, we traveled across 10 states to 12 different drive-ins that are either operational or even the ones that have been closed. So these, even the arc of the drive-in is specific for view lines that everyone is facing in towards the screen. It doesn't exceed a seven-degree width, so we're not looking down the side of it. So we, we went to several different drive-ins, took measurements, talked to the owners, interacted with the customers on what they like and don't like. So this is, and the benefit to us is the vast majority of these locations were built 40, 50 years ago, and they're kind of stuck with their shape, and they're like, man, I wish we had done X, Y, and Z. And we're able to take all that advice into consideration. So this was a, a very custom drawling based upon our personal research into drive-ins.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Douglas.
Just a couple more follow-up questions, and you just brought up something that I may want to ask you about. But anyway, I noticed on, it'll be a while before you do, I assume, Phase Two.
Yes, sir.
But I was trying to figure out, even before we broke for lunch, how you were going to do ticket booths Phase Two. With the traffic, how do you determine if you're coming in through the first Phase One through those ticket booths? How do you make it to the ticket booths in Phase Two?
Certainly. And that's what, let me, should be able to sketch this out for you. So when we do Phase Two, we will gate this road right here. That will then be closed off to public use. We'll probably leave the existing road there so we have access for deliveries or fire equipment to the building, but that road will be gated on both ends so that no public will go through there. Our ticket booths, which are just small booths, those can be moved all the way up here to the Phase Two location. So then everyone will buy tickets back there. So now we are doubling our queue space. Everyone will buy a ticket here and then curl around. It is two lanes at this point, so that if you're looking for the upper theater, they'll stay to the left, the lower theater, you stay to the right. We're, be showing two different movies, so people will have self-regul, they're going to go to the theater they want to watch the movie for.
So you'll mark those?
Correct. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, I mean, luckily, we've only got two choices. You're either watching Movie A or Movie B. A's to the left, B's to the right.
So the ticket booths are not permanent structures?
No. They're not going to have foundations. They are, I mean, it's a, probably not much bigger than this here, like, like a toll booth almost.
Okay. And then, my other question was, when it comes to, you mentioned something, you've done some personal study on the movie theater, or the drive-in theaters, and what was your reasoning? Because I want to make sure, because you're asking for conditional use permit, and you're asking for waivers for the gravel. So I heard Mr. Baxter say that the primary reason why you're asking for the proposed gravel parking area is for financial reason only?
No, the, it, that's, it's very important. I mean, that's, it's, in all honesty, it'd probably be a, a deal breaker for the project. It's, the paving of this is almost $600,000 for that much asphalt. The, we've never, we did not come across a single drive-in that was paved. Of the ones, we talked to a couple of ones that said, have you guys thought about paving it? And they were strongly against it just because it'll get so hot during the day that you'll be, nobody will want to sit outside on a asphalt parking lot. As far as the benefits of the gravel, it's, I think it's aesthetically better for the location, that you're not, it's not a 450-space parking lot in the middle of the woods. It blends in better. I think that it has a, the more traditional feel to it. We looked at some locations that did some different variations on it, but the ones that looked the best were the solid gravel, because they're able to maintain it very well, and were able to just keep up with it to a high standard.
But during your research, did you look and see, did you see some that had green space?
We, there are some...
Gravel also?
There are some that do like a strip of grass, a strip of gravel. Be honest with you, most of them, it's very challenging, because they don't do curbs, because you're driving across, that you end up with bad-looking grass that people park on top of, and then gravel that's full of weeds because the dirt's getting into the gravel. So it's, it did not seem that it would be a feasible option to keep it as a nice-looking area. You mean, if you're sodding the grass and then somebody parks on top of it for two hours, you're going to end up with killed grass anyway.
Now that I know that the road, proposed road that's coming in on this property is going to be public, and eventually may be taken in by the county or the city or wherever it's going to be looked at, I guess this question may go to staff or someone. I'm assuming we're, I mean, I should never use that word, assume, that we're granting a waiver or granting permission to only have sidewalk on one side instead of sidewalks on both sides?
Well, that's what you're being asked to consider, not the staff.
Right.
And it doesn't preclude a development coming on the opposite tracks to put in sidewalks. They'll have enough right-of-way. They're just asking that during the construction of their project, they only are required to do it on one side. They may have a use on the other side that actually wants sidewalks on both sides because there's better access.
But it's also, the property on the other side is vacant also, correct?
That's correct. That's why they're asking for only sidewalk on one side. You could grant them that they don't have to put in any sidewalks if you care to.
But our standard would be is that we, on a public road, we're asking for curb and gutter and sidewalks, correct? On both sides?
That's why they're asking for a waiver, so it's only on one side. Correct.
And if I may, I would point out that the other courts in Commerce do not have sidewalks. And there's only a, I mean, it's a walking path, it's not a sidewalk on Commerce on one side. So it's not like what we're asking for is completely inconsistent with the other courts in Commerce or with Commerce Park.
I understand, Mr. Hector. And the reason why I'm asking this is I want it on record, why you're asking these things, so we have it on record, so someone can ask. We can say we asked these questions. That's the only reason why I'm asking.
When I did my original research for this plan and looking through the, this is in the subdivision regulations, Section 5.5 on sidewalks. Sidewalks are required on both sides of all public streets located within an incorporated city and on both sides of public streets in unincorporated areas where average lot frontage is 100 feet or less. Because we're in an industrial park district, we're required to have more than that 100 feet. So I took that as we would not be required to have sidewalks. So our original plan that even went to TRC did not involve any sidewalks. For our justification, we didn't have, we're not expecting any walk-up customers. We have, all the lots are going to have to be over the 100-foot. The only thing that kind of came back to us was, it has a section in here where sidewalks are not required. They will be required if close to pedestrian generators to continue a walk on an existing street to link areas, or if providing linkages to future developments that will meet the criteria. In my opinion, I don't think it fits into any of those categories. The questionable item was the pedestrian generator, because there's a walking path on Commerce, but my vast majority is that's for walking back and forth. It's not really a through fare for people to go anywhere. Dead ends at the one end of Commerce, and the only residential that it touches are the apartments all the way down by the end. So if you guys are willing, I would rather, my appeal would be to not do any sidewalks. I don't think that they'll be used, and from my understanding, once they're installed, they're not ours anyway. They'd be turned over within the public right-of-way. So that's up to you.
I appreciate you answering those questions.
Is that all, sir? Okay. All right. Dr. Urban, I had you down, and then we're going to try to move on here, hopefully.
Just two quick questions. I've heard, I thought I heard earlier today that the elevation of the back row to the front row is like 18 feet?
Um, I think it's close to that.
So that's a gradual slope all the way, and all of that's gravel?
Correct. Yeah, it looks like it's maybe closer to about 14 feet drop from the top to the front, but that's over, of course, a 400 feet. So it's a very negligible slope. It would be, it's not even as steep as this area in here.
Okay. The other question I have is your schedule, your desired schedule. Assuming you get approvals, when do you hope to open for business?
About this time next year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And I might have missed a question here a while ago. Bob, Mr. Klingfus, did you have a question that you wanted to ask?
In, in, my concern would be more in the future, maybe 10 or 15 years from now, what would happen with this, the development at that time? Would the, your security plans and everything, will they probably be, that would be my concern, what would happen?
Like, what is our plan with the facility 10 years from now?
Yeah, that, and plus, plus maybe the screen itself, if it wasn't kept up and it's abandoned?
But, I mean, just to be frank with you, it's a 25-year mortgage on the property. I have full intention to run this for much longer than 10 years.
I'm hoping you succeed. I'm thinking for the worst.
I, worst-case scenario, I mean, that would run with any business, I would assume. I mean, my, my full intention that this will be a pristine situation for many years to come. I mean, and I, I hope to pass this on to my little guy sitting in the back row. This is, I intend this to be a, a family business, a legacy item that will serve the county, to serve well, and look well on everyone.
I guess my, my concern would be if it was a later owner didn't have your desire for as good a security plan as you do.
Like, police security?
Yes.
And I don't know if that's a, if that's a binding element on the, I can't speak for what a future owner would do, whether their permit would transfer or not. It's not my intention at all, I promise you that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Klingfus, as you know, it's kind of a complaint-driven system. So if we have a binding element says we're supposed to do something, then that, that binding element attaches to the property, and the owner of the property's not doing it, and you call and complain, you know, the code enforcement guy's going to go out there and see if, he's probably going to buy a ticket and go to the movies, but he's going to go out there and see what we're doing. So, you know, I mean, that, that's how it comes to you all's attention.
One, one other question I had real quick on the screen itself, kind of goes to Mr. Klingfus's question down the road. If something happened and, and you all decided to, you know, get out of the business or whatever, what would happen to the screen? You know, that's a 50-foot tall screen, and, and, you know, would it be, would you all take it down? Would it, you know, how, because we run into this sometimes with cell towers and different things. Once the, you know, if, if the technology changes and they take the cell tower, you know, don't need a cell tower, who's going to take it down?
I mean, it's, the intention is it's a steel structure. It'll hold value as scrap at worst-case scenarios. I assume if somebody else, if the drive-in, God forbid, closed and somebody else bought this property, that the screen would have scrap value to be used for at some level. But I, it's not my intention to ever take it down either.
All right. Commissioners, are you all, are we ready to move into the next section?
I have a quick question.
All right. Wait, please.
Yes, I'll make it quick. It came to my mind as we're talking about the traffic coming in, the four lanes, and you said if the back place was being used, you would fence off, gate off the, the drive for the front?
Correct. The cut, the cut-through would be closed off.
Are you never going to be having shows in the front and the back both?
When they're, when both shows are going, the people would buy their tickets at the end, and then right here would be their first split screen. The back screen would split to the left, the front screen would split to the right, and that, that road continues all the way around back to their entrance into the theater.
Okay. That answers my question, because I'm thinking if they're going across like they would if there's only one going on, then they'd be inside the second.
Right. And most likely, we would schedule the, the first movie will start, and then be a five or 10-minute delay, start the second movie. So everybody's moved past for the first one.
Everybody goes all the way around, then that settles the problem.
Yeah, to get to the first screen, you loop around.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
All right. Commissioners, let's, let's move on in here, if we can, to the rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant. Do you have anything, or, or Mr. Baxter, that you want to rebut?
I don't have anything additional, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the opposition. Mr. Comer, I know you, you said you really oppose, but do you have anything that you want to rebut or any, anything that you'd like to add? Okay? All right. Final statement. Mr. Comer, do you have anything that you'd like to make on a final statement? All right. Mr. Baxter, final statement.
So, I suspect that some of you all have been to a drive-in movie theater, but I also suspect that none of you all have ever had to address this as a part of a, a application before this body. So this is a unique thing. And I, I think the one thing that I would point to, that, that I want you all to be thinking about, is that I don't know that there was a question you all asked Stephen today that he hadn't thought about and couldn't answer. This is not something where he, you know, went to Georgetown and went to the movie theater up there and said, "Hey, this would be a great idea, I'm bringing it back to Olden County." And he came in and he just said, "Okay, here we go." I mean, he's done his research, he's done some analysis, he understands what it's gonna take in order for him to be able to make this work. You know, he's not joking when he says he's got a 25-year mortgage in order to pay for this. So he is, he is invested in this project. This is not something that he has any intention of failing, and it's not just some white elephant that's gonna end up out there on Commerce Parkway with a parking lot that nobody can do anything with. The conditional use, to me, is, is a pretty easy thing. I mean, we're in a location here, I look at this site and I know where his other site was, and I knew what the opposition was gonna be to the other site. This particular location probably is, is more expensive for him, but the other, the other thing about it is, is that his neighbors are there from 7:00 to 5:00, and he's using this location in the evening, traffic is gonna be lower, he's not gonna be disturbing anybody, there's not gonna be any kind of issue with that, and we're talking about a road called Commerce Parkway. We're not talking about little Oldegrange Road, we're talking about a road that was designed by the county for this purpose, you know, in order to bear the, the traffic that's gonna be on this road. We, we get to, to the issue of the paving, and I pointed out, there's a couple locations nearby where you all have granted waivers about this. Stephen, again, is very upfront that if he's gotta pave this site, that it is a problem. But the other point that he made is a valid point. If this is a paved, paved lot and you've got a 90-degree day in July, it's gonna be 85 degrees when the sun goes down with it, with the heat coming off of that pavement, and that's gonna i- impact his sales as well. He showed you a picture of another drive-in that's got paved gravel parking lot. You know, as a kid growing up, I went to the drive-in, it was a paved parking lot. I understand, you know, a big thing of gravel or a big thing of paving, neither one is, is all that attractive, but that's the nature of this business. So we would ask you all to grant that waiver. And in line with that, the landscape waiver is, you know, they've got the buffer, they'll have to, have to address some of those issues, but any internal landscaping is just gonna interfere with his product. So we would ask you to grant the landscape waiver as well. And then as it relates to the sidewalks, you know, you go out to Commerce and you go into those courts, they don't have any sidewalks. So this actually would be, I think, the first sidewalk in Commerce if you don't count, count the walking path on Commerce Parkway. So he's, he would certainly prefer to have no sidewalk, but he's, he would understand if he has to have sidewalk on one side of the road. But we would ask at least that you all waive that requirement, that it not be on both sides of the road. We thank you for your attention today. I know it's been a long time, but thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baxter. And with that, then docket PZ 17011 and PZ 17012 are closed, and I'll ask, we will consider the approval for the conditional use permit first, which is docket PZ 17011. And beings, I don't think we, not that I can recall that we have ever done a conditional use as far as the planning commission, I'm gonna ask Mr. Urban to explain to us what's required for us to consider that, sir.
As always in your staff report, there's some guidance, and you are being asked to consider either approval or denial. And I ask you to look at this on, it's on page three in your staff report on the very bottom where it starts with conditional use and considering your motion. There are some checklist items and you really need to kind of fill in those as to what you think are the appropriate reasons for either approval or denial. And you can refer to the applicant's justification statement, as always, if you care to, in considering, in this case, an approval. With the conditional use permit, I heard only two things that I think would be conditions that could be placed upon that conditional use permit. I want to jump quickly to the, the next steps would be considering the waivers and then the development plan, and the development plan has a list of conditions that are in your staff report as well. Obviously, if you choose not to grant this conditional use permit, there's no use to go on to any other of the considerations today or requested applica- application. So the two items that I have, that I thought could be included as conditions, should you choose to approve the conditional use, are, number one, that low-level lighting, as described during the hearing, be used. And that was, again, no, no tall light standards, there were only bollards or low-level pedestrian-type lighting in between the parking area and the concession stand and around the concession stand for lighting. And that the second item is that the drive-in theater is the only use approved under this conditional use, and any other use must come back before this body. Now, typically, a conditional use goes to the Board of Adjustments, but since this case was brought before the planning commission as part of the development plan, I think it appropriate that it comes back here if, for some reason, the plan changed and it was gonna be used for any other use other than a drive-in theater. So those are the two things, I think, to consider.
All right. Mr. Urban, thank you. And with that, the chair would now consider or entertain a motion on docket PZ 17011, which is the request for approval of a conditional use permit for a drive-in theater.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry? Okay. Did you, you gonna do a motion or?
I'll defer.
Okay. All right, Mr. Horton.
Mr. Chairman, for, for you, as the motion, the binding elements that Mr. Urban mentioned, he mentioned two. What about binding element number six?
Hold on just a second. Let's get a motion on the floor and then we'll open it up for discussion.
But that's a good question, but, well...
Hold your thought there. Mr. Horton, you moved, let's go ahead and do the motion. And then we'll get a second, and then we'll open it up for that discussion.
Okay, thank you. I make motion to approve the conditional use permit, docket PZ 17-01. It is specifically itemized in section 200-030I2, heavy industrial zoning, as a permitted conditional use under the heading Recreation. I think this is a unique venue, it's gonna provide family entertainment, I think it lends to the city of LaGrange, the nostalgia and the history of the city. In addition to the accurate justifications noted by the applicant, having to do with the positive community needs and with compatibility with surrounding uses and availability of all public facilities, and also it's 1,000 feet off Commerce Parkway. In addition, it complies with the comprehensive plan goal LU-3, having to do with increased tax revenue, and LU-3-1 regarding compatibility with surrounding land uses, and LU-3-2 regarding new commercial workplace development. And in that motion, I'd like to include the conditions mentioned below about the low-level lighting as described, and this condition only applies to this particular use of this particular property.
Mr. Combs, is that adequate?
Just add that this, the, as a conditional use...
Should I call in, sir?
...be limited to a drive-in theater specifically, and no other commercial use imposed.
Okay, is that, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I think that was the second, the last part of mine, that this conditional use applies only to this particular docket, used as a drive-in theater and no others. Anything else, we'd have to come back to the commission.
Okay, that's fine. All right. We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Mr. McWilliams, seconds. All right. And with that, now, is there any discussion on the motion to approve the conditional use waiver permit request for a drive-in theater? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. We will now proceed to vote on docket PZ 17011, which is the request for approval of a conditional use permit for a drive-in theater on approximately 30 acres, a property located on Commerce Drive, Parkway. Fox, go ahead and do the vote. It's a motion to approve.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
The motion to approve the conditional use permit request for a drive-in theater has been approved on a vote of 11 in favor and one opposed. Now, I will ask on docket PZ 17012, do we need to, can do the waivers first?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead and outline those waiver requests, Mr. Urban.
Well, again, I think we should take these separately. And I do want to clarify one thing, I'm sorry. I do want to clarify one thing with the applicant, if I may. The first one is parking surfaces, and this is to include, "All parking surfaces, driveway, entrances, and outside storage areas shall be paved with asphalt, concrete, or paver blocks." Now, that's what's in our regulation, they're asking for a waiver of that. My, I'm, I'm, I don't know that I heard whether the entrance drive was gonna be asphalt or gravel.
Need to get you back up to the front, sir.
And again, I apologize for this, but I...
It's okay.
So once you come off of the public road, it's gonna be all gravel?
Asphalt would end at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay. So, thank you. So what they're asking for is everything in all their entrance driveways, all their circulation driveways, and all their parking area be gravel?
Okay.
So that's the first waiver to consider, that's from section 210080 for parking surfaces.
Okay. You wanna do it first, or you wanna?
Yeah, you're ready for a motion.
Okay. All right. Let's, let's, the chair would now entertain a motion on the request for a waiver, parking lot, uh, waiver from section 210080, a park, parking area standard waiver. Mr. McWilliams, I see your hand, just, just ready to jump there, so I'll, I'll call on you, sir.
Sir, we'll give this a shot. I'm, I'm moved that we approve that waiver, PZ 17012, parking lot surface waiver, because obviously, as Mr. Baxter pointed out, and talking about the difference between gravel and $600,000 worth of, of pavement, so the cost involved in the two are, are certainly a factor. The other thing is, I've been to a lot of drive-in theaters in my younger days, and I don't think I ever went to one that had blacktop. So the gravel doesn't concern me in, in the least bit, and I'd sure hate to see it be a, a deal buster, so...
Is that adequate motion, Combs?
What was that last part?
Should I call again, sir? Sorry.
Is your motion, it should begin from the end of the public Parkway, or Park Drive, it's all asphalt. From, from that point forward, part of your motion is that it all be gravel?
Gravel. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Everybody understand that? And do we have a second? Okay, Ms. Bonet, seconds? All right. Now, we'll open it up for discussion on the waiver request. Mr. Finney, I'm sorry.
Should that, just for the record, include the fact that the handicap spaces will be paved? Because the thing was, all surfaces will be gravel. Just, just a question.
Mr. McWilliams, is that okay?
I certainly think that would strengthen the motion, so...
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And the, Ms. Bonet, is that okay with you?
That's exactly what I was gonna bring up.
Okay.
Is it on the plan that that is concrete or pavement?
Yeah, it's in the plan, but just to have it on the record as far as the motion and everything.
I see a, see a thumbs up from, from the applicant, so I think we're good. All right. Any further discussion on the waiver request? Ready to vote? Okay, Ms. Fox, this is a waiver request on docket PZ 17012, waiver of section 210080. Go ahead and do the vote, if you would.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
All right. The requested waiver on docket PZ 17012 has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. And at this point, I'll call on Mr. Urban again to outline our next waiver request.
The second request is for the, a landscape waiver from section 2100800 for interior landscape areas. And again, as Brooke had shown in her staff report, these are areas in parking lots typically where you break up the parking bays with a landscape area. Your testimony that the applicant obviously didn't want to have to put those in, it would block the view of the screens, and so, again, it's for your consideration.
All right. Chair, we're now, at this point, entertain a motion on the waiver request of section 300-080, the interior parking landscape areas. Do we have a motion? Okay, Mr. McWilliams, I saw your hand again, sir.
A two in a row and I quit. Okay. I'm moved to approve the landscape waiver of section 210-080.
It's 300-080, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, 300. You know, simply because it just makes absolutely no sense to have anything in the parking area of a drive-in theater that would interfere with the customers being able to see the screen. And I'll hang my hat on that.
Mr. Combs, is that adequate?
It is adequate. I assume you're saying it will achieve the basic objectives of the regulation by approving this motion?
Absolutely, I, I say that.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Douglas, seconds? Any discussion now on the waiver request of section 300-080? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none? This is a motion to approve, the waiver request of 300-080. Ms. Fox.
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mr. Klingfuss?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
All right. Oh, sorry. The vote. The waiver request has, on 300-080, has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0, and I think we have one more waiver request and then the development plan to consider.
Yeah. The last request for a waiver is the sidewalk waiver for a public road in a commercial subdivision. It's from section 6.3, item number F, for non-residential subdivision design principles, stating that commercial and office subdivisions must provide sidewalks on both sides of the street. You've heard testimony from the applicant that he's willing to put sidewalks on one side, and I think that honestly, that when the other lots are developed, we will look and see whether it's appropriate to put sidewalks on the, on the second side of the street.
All right. You've heard that outlined by Mr. Urban. What's the pleasure of the commission on this waiver request on the sidewalks? Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will move for approval of the waiver as requested. I believe the applicant has, in good faith, made a commitment to a cost that probably prevents or presents no benefit to him in, in terms of this application. Nevertheless, in a, an act to achieve some level of compliance with the, the regulation has, has made the offer to construct the sidewalk on one side. As Mr. Urban notes, making that provision by no means precludes the construction of a sidewalk on the other side of the road when and if other properties on, on the other side of the road should happen to develop. Otherwise, it maintains substantial compliance with the objectives of the regulation. I think that's all I have.
Mr. Combs?
This is factory.
All right, do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Mesker, seconds. With that, is there any discussion on this waiver request of section 6.3, which is a requirement to put sidewalks just on one side of the street? Any discussion? All right, ready to vote? Ms. Fox, this is a motion to approve the waiver request of section 6.3.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Clingfuß?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Albertson?
Yes.
Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas? Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
All right, last waiver request here on section 6.3, item F, sidewalk requirements on just one side of the proposed road, has passed on a vote of twelve to zero. With that, Mr. Urban, I'll ask then for you to outline the last request here on the development plan.
You're asked to consider approval of a development plan, and there are some binding elements that are appropriate for this. I'm gonna actually strike one of them, because it's been covered in the conditions of the conditional use, but I'll read, I'll read them. First one is that the approval, including the waivers, shall only apply to the plan reviewed at the April 25, 2017 Planning Commission public hearing. The second one in your staff report, I'm gonna scratch, because again, that site lighting has already been covered in the conditional approval. The development plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county laws and ordinances and requirements at the time of the approval. A landscape plan must be submitted to staff for review and approval. An updated traffic analysis per Oldham County requirements must be conducted with the future development of Phase Two of the drive-in and/or Track Two and Three to determine area impacts and recommended road improvements or other measures, if necessary, to maintain efficient, safe traffic flow while minimizing traffic congestion. And then the last one is that the applicant must coordinate with Oldham County Police Department and LaGrange Police Department to determine appropriate personnel and time period of traffic management and security plan, and I heard no others during the course of the discussion today.
All right, Mr. Urban, thank you, and Commissioners, you've heard the outline on a request for approval of the development plan on docket PZ 17012. What is the pleasure of the commission? Chair would entertain a motion. Don't everybody jump at once. Okay, Mr. King?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move for approval of the development plan. It looks like to me that the, the applicant did their homework on this. I think it is well-understood that a previous site was considered, and it didn't pan out, and they doubled down and, and, and did their homework, and came back with a suitable plan. I think there's compelling evidence in terms of the, the fact that no one showed up to oppose this application, that the waivers that went along with this, and the conditional use approval as well, that went along with this plan, met with very little opposition. Nevertheless, I find, based on the testimony, expert testimony presented, that the, the plan is consistent with the, the objectives of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, and move for approval.
With the attached binding elements...
Yes, absolutely.
...as outlined, all right. Anything else, Mr. Combs?
That's fine.
Okay, have a second, do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Douglas, seconds? Do we have any discussion now on the motion to approve the development plan on docket PZ 17012? Any discussion?
Question.
Question's been called, Ms. Fox, if you would, let's do the vote, to motion to approve the development plan.
Ms. Albertson? Dr. Arvin?
Yes.
Ms. Bonet?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Clingfuß?
Yes.
Mr. Mesker?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
All right, docket PZ 17012, the motion to approve the development plan has been approved on a vote of twelve to zero, and with that, let's take about a, oh, not quite a ten-minute recess, recess to reset for our next docketed item, we have three, three dockets left.
Who is it, Mr. Finley?